Next item, please.
Next item of action items, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below. Move that action items one through fifteen be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved?
Or do we need to exclude any items that anybody has? I'm sorry.
I have a question on number two.
I have a question too.
So we've got a motion.
So we gotta have a support.
I'll support.
All right. Motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Moszep. All right, question on?
Number two.
On number two?
There was some mine as well.
And, all right, any other action items that we've got questions on?
I have a question on number nine as well.
All right, two and nine.
I do also have a question, I just lost the question.
But so far, nothing that we'd want pulled.
Nothing wanted pulled, no.
I have a question on eight.
All right, so questions on numbers two, eight, and nine. All right. Well, let's just take them in order, number two.
Okay, I may, may need, Mr. Martin here?
Yeah.
Um, this Graduation Alliance. Is it for? It says services, and it says for classes for students, but there's not a number attached to it. Is it for, is that dollar figure for if we only have one student taking it, or if we have a hundred students using those services?
So let me give some context, and hopefully that'll answer some questions, because I know trustee McDonald had some questions as well. So Graduation Alliance is a third-party organization that came to us through Wayne Risa that supports students who aren't on track for graduation. So I'm gonna wear the hat of high school principal a little bit. We oftentimes have students, so we have six thousand high school students with six thousand different stories. Sometimes their story isn't a, is not a perfect fit for the, them being successful at the traditional high school. And as much as we try to round peg square hole, sometimes that just doesn't work out. In the past, what we've done at Dearborn High, Fortson and Edzo Ford, is you get to a point if a student is behind, where it's in their best interest to transition to another school or another entity that can get them to graduation sooner. And that can be a kid who struggles with attendance, that could be a kid who struggles with anxiety, that could be a kid who struggles because they're the primary worker at home and they're working two jobs to support their family. So there's a lot of different instances of why that is. Graduation Alliance is a third-party entity that allows us as a district to maintain our relationship with those students and provide them educational services to try to get them to graduation underneath our umbrella, if that makes sense. Prior to this year, those students, we would counsel or refer them to other alternative programs within this area. Now we don't have to do that, we can keep them under our umbrella, and that umbrella brings them through Magnet, the Magnet program. For some of those students, it will be a reduction in overall credits that they need to graduate from twenty-three to twenty, which is a benefit to them. So the cost to Graduation Alliance is five hundred and fifty dollars per student, per month. So the three hundred and ten thousand dollars is a projection based on our, our full-year cost to them for the amount of students that we are going or have currently in the program. So in October, we had thirty-seven, in November, that number increased to eighty-four. So I asked them, and Tom Wall.
Hold on, Mr. Martin.
Yep.
I have to entertain a motion to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes.
So moved?
Support. Trustee Barry?
Uh, it was made, I think, by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Moszep.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep, yes, trustee Peteschka?
Yeah.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor.
Yes.
Now, talk really fast.
I think we went twelve for twelve this year on having to extend this.
I've, I've been to a few of these, I'm sorry. So, uh, that, that's what the cost is. The cost is a full-year projection as we're enrolling students in what we might spend through Graduation Alliance. The benefit also is, as students are in, we are able through twenty-three A to recoup some of the funding, the FTE, for those students. And we get about one-twelfth of the FTE for every student based on the month. And that comes directly back from the state, so there's gonna be a little bit of a, a switch over in terms of funding. There isn't always a guarantee, though, based on how student, student pupil accounting works, they have to be, and this would be, Fadio would be great explaining this. There are some students who are gonna get enrolled in the program mid-month, who we wouldn't be able to collect as our FTE. So the ESER funds would be able to step in, in between and help offset that cost or offset that, that loss that we as a district would have to take. But even if we kept a kid for the full time, we would still have, we, we would not pay more than what the FTE would be for that student, if that makes sense. So this is really a third-party entity that helps provide twenty-four-seven tutoring. The class structure is different, they're, they're given two classes at a time, they have about four weeks to take those courses. They can move quicker through the, the courses. It's self-paced, so it's, it's a much better design for a lot of our students who have struggled within the traditional program.
This is all online?
Yes, yep, yep, they have a, they have a teacher, they also have twenty-four-seven tutors and supports, they gave her Chromebook, yep. And our graduation specialists are really the ones that are counseling and helping support students that are in the program. And we just had a conversation last week, they're still connected to these students. Our goal really is for those students, we're hoping, you know, a lot of them, it's just a season of life. The hope is, hey, grab some credits and then come back to us. Prior to this, when we would counsel kids away from us, typically they wouldn't come back. With them being at Magnet, the goal is for a lot of these students to possibly come back and return to the high school. If that doesn't happen, they're still graduating as a Dearborn Public School student with Magnet, they still have the ability to be involved in their home high school programs, just like our Magnet students are as well. So it's, it's really a win-win for everybody. The, the cost will end up getting itself mostly offset through that FTE kickback.
But we don't get the foundation allowance for them as a student?
You do, we get, we get a one-twelfth for each month that we're able to report them. But the way the state re, the way the, my understanding is, the way that the state is, they have to be in there for the full month in order to have that one-twelfth foundation allotment come back to us. Tom, am I right there?
Trustee McDonald, does that also answer your question?
Uh, more or less, I was just having trouble picturing what this looks like, because I know we have E twenty twenty, and we have graduation specialists, and how do these children differ from those? So I kind of understand, but how are the students for this program identified as opposed to, to those that go into E twenty twenty?
Or the Magnet?
Just the Magnet specifically, or get help from just the graduation specialist?
Yeah, so E twenty twenty at the traditional high schools is really used in primary, two primary ways. Number one, for kids who have, are attending our first through sixth hours, where we may not be able to fill a class for them, we'll use E twenty twenty as a, a stand-in if we're not able to offer a class.
Well, maybe it's the ASAP program I'm thinking of, it's like credit recovery.
Yep, yep, so we use it during our first through sixth period for kids who may wanna take a course that's not offered in that hour and their schedule's jammed up, or there's too many conflicts, or we use it for credit recovery. That's really how we use E twenty twenty. This is a very eight, it's not, it's not through edgenuity, E twenty twenty is through edgenuity, this isn't through edgenuity. It's a separate entity, but it borrows a lot of the same concepts in terms of self-driven, self-paced teacher supporting, if that makes sense.
So how are the kids identified to go into which program?
Kids are really identified by your graduation specialists, which is something that the district has committed to, and I will tell you, the four of them are incredible at building relationships with students. Oftentimes for, in the past, students that have been in this position, they found them better alternative placements for them that better fit their lives, and oftentimes, that relationship with those students continue just because it is so relationship-based. So when we brought this to the graduation specialists, they were excited, because, hey, the three or four years of relationships, we still get to build upon that and hopefully see them have success as Dearborn Public School graduates one day.
That helps, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you repeat the, the cost per student and the number of student, projected students to your alliance?
So the cost per student per month to Graduation Alliance is five hundred and fifty dollars per student.
Per month?
Per month.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, so if you, so it's, it's hard to say how much, because some students just came in in November, right? Some students might be November, December, January, February, and, and maybe through June. Some students might be February through June. So what Graduation Alliance did is they kind of projected out what our October and November enrollment was and said, this is a good number to keep you underneath that purchase order to recoup the, or have the cost for the full year, if that makes sense.
So we might not spend this whole thing if we don't, if the enrollment doesn't get that, to that level?
Correct, correct, and a lot of that, a lot of that expense is gonna get recouped through our FTE and state funding.
Correct, that's the gross amount from the expense side, revenue would offset that, but it's, we don't net it together for the contract purpose.
Yep.
Okay.
And Wayne Risa is like a third-party on this, because as you can see, the counting of the students is gonna be very complicated. So Wayne Risa will do that calculation through the student counting and, and get that information, and we go, we get billed by Wayne Risa, we'll get reimbursed by the state.
Trustee Watts?
Mr. Martin, what was the number of students that were enrolled last time to now? Was it thirty?
So we had thirty-seven in October and eighty-four for November.
Is, why the increase, do we know?
Uh, so you had forty-seven more students. So frankly, some of that is just the process of being in the building, right, building relationships with students. We've had some students that have come to us and said, hey, I heard about this program, I think it's gonna be a benefit for my situation. We've had other students where, you know, it's been two or three years of building a relationship with them, and, and you know, after no, October, really, you're through your first card marking, and for some of these students, they've struggled, and we always wanna give them an opportunity to improve, but there is a reality of how much time do we give it, because ultimately, high school students only have four years. So at some point, it becomes a, let's have a pragmatic approach to what is in your best interest as a student to ensure that you get a high school diploma.
And then what grades are these students in?
Ninth, ninth through twelfth graders.
What's the majority?
Uh, I couldn't tell you that, because their credits are gonna be all over the place. I know that the process is, they send, they send recommendations through me, and then I'm attaching transcripts. We've had some first semester ninth graders, and we've had some seventh, sixth semester ninth graders as well. So some, some students that have been with us for a while and just have struggled, struggled. And again, it's not because they aren't diligent students, a lot of it is because of life circumstances. And we haven't, we haven't had a way to keep them under our umbrella, so this is a win-win. Yep.
Any additional questions on this action item?
Uh, not much of a question, but a comment. So I, I hope this stays this way, that this is accommodating those students who have very difficult circumstances of, of keeping up in school, and I think it's, it's a great idea. But hopefully, it's not like, uh, an easy way for students to think in that, oh, I could actually enroll in this program and not be, or be done with high school, so.
Yeah.
Because definitely, the high school experience is, is the best, I think, route for students, but for some, and may not be the best optimal way for them, so. Yeah, I hope that stays that way.
Yep, and that's the goal, and that's the vision of, the vision and passion of all of our graduation specialists, for sure.
Thanks.
All right, next item was gonna be number eight. Trustee Moszep, you had a question on this?
Uh, so, Dr. Maliko and Mr. Wall on this. So I, I wanted to understand this first, this project, this is for this school year and the next, correct? And for the, or this company, are they gonna be taking the bids then for the individual projects, like HVAC and other things?
The subcontractors?
Yes.
All right.
Or are we doing that work?
Yeah, I'll ask Mark to come up, this is the HV, HVCC, it's what we talked about at the building and site.
Yeah.
As well. Okay, so, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, trustee Moszep.
I know you were looking at me when I was talking, so here it is again. So we're awarding one company for this major project.
Mark is a construction manager.
Correct, a construction manager?
So are we still doing bids for the various projects?
Correct, this is just, this is what we talked about, and, and we might have some notes, so I'll come out to explain this a little bit more. But this is for the allocated funds, this would be what we consider the soft costs, and this is for the management parts. We have architectures, we have our construction manager, and then we might have money allocated for permits and things like that, asbestos abatement, those specials, engineering, soil engineering, these are all of what we consider soft costs, which are not included in the hard costs, which would actually be the equipment and the subcontractors that would be performing and installing the equipment.
And this is for this year and the year?
This, this will be for the, the life of the, the budget. So, and we talked about it in the building and site committee a little bit, and we have a little bit more information.
I will give a synopsis.
Sure, I'll, I'll wait, then I'll wait for that.
And then if you have more questions, stand by.
Okay, sure thing, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, trustee McDonald, you had a question on number nine?
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about number nine, because we have the AT&amp;T and the other three G networks that are being
obsolete.
Obsolete, and they're being shut down, one of them at the end of next year, and one of them January first this coming year. And I just wanna make sure that there's no interruption in service for fire alarms, because it's, covers fifteen of the sixty-six dialers that we have. And I know getting things right now are very difficult, so I'm just wondering if there'll be any interruptions or any things that are concerning.
Yeah, there, there really isn't, trustee McDonald, thank you for the question. Verizon isn't shutting down their three G service till the very end of this year, and I think you mentioned that. So giving till December, I've spoken with our vendors through our alarm companies right now, there'll be no problems getting those dialers switched over into next year, and actually into the next budget cycle, so we just wanted to get these taken care of now, because AT&amp;T kinda surprised everybody when they said, we're gonna go January one, or somewhere in the first few weeks there in January, we didn't wanna take any chances, like you said, we don't want that service disrupted.
Okay, good.
All right, if there's no further questions on any of the action items, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep, yes, trustee Peteschka?
Yeah.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes.
Summary?
Before we do the summary, I get to again ask for a, a motion to extend the meeting.
So moved?
Support.
Once again, I think we're gonna give it to trustee McDonald and then trustee Moszep.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep, yes, trustee Peteschka? Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes, now you can go through and summarize it as quick as you can.
Summary of agenda action items, approval, one, number one, approval warrants, number two, approval of award to Graduation Alliance, three, approval of award to Henry Ford Health Systems, four, approval of award to Kami, five, approval of award to NearPod, six, approval of award to Data Image Systems, Inc., seven, approval of award to Spartan Construction Group, eight, approval of award to Clark Construction Company, per board report twenty-one dash fifty-three, nine, approval of award to Vanguard Fire and Security, ten to thirteen, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items per P twelve, fourteen, approval of financial statement, and fifteen, approval of donations.
Thank you very much, next item, please.
Next item, we have, we already did the discussion item?
No.
No, we did not, so discussion item, policy updates, bylaws, number zero-one-six-seven-point-one, voting, Dr. Glenn Maliko and Mr. David Stonen.
Good evening, we discussed this policy at our policy committee meeting, it's required by law.
Thanks, David.
Very succinct, and we're gonna be voting on this one at the college meeting. Great. All right, next item, please.
Board of Education Business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
Well, I know there was several emails in the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate the trustees for forwarding them to me, I know trustee Moszep sent a couple over to me in the last week. So just keep funneling all the information up, so we can get common responses back to everyone, thanks.
Board member, committee, and organization reports.
The Building and Site Meeting Committee met right before this meeting, and we did, we talked about the construction manager that we have. There is an eighty-twenty split, eighty percent hard cost, twenty percent soft cost, as was discussed. The hard costs include everything from like plumbing, plumbing to cement to, you know, those kind of things, and the soft costs were discussed. The project's sixty-four, the hard cost portion of the project's about sixty-four million dollars. And, and that includes the subcontractors. We have a construction manager, and we had three bids come back. Clark was the lowest bid on the financials, we have two portions of the project, one is the addition port, the district portion, and then also the possibility of the college portion. They came back low on all of the estimates, and they also were by far, they scored highest on the matrix. So that's why Clark was granted that contract. Let's see. We also talked about the project governance guiding document, and that will, you guys will get a copy of that in board briefs coming up from Tom Wall in his section, and it talked about all the procedures and the process, it's all laid out exactly how everything will go through this project. For example, if there's change orders, anything that's over a hundred thousand dollars must be brought to the board, anything between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars goes to Tom, and then anything that falls less than fifty thousand dollars goes to Mark's office. And most change orders are nowhere near a hundred thousand dollars, and it just talked about the limit and the authorization. Well, this whole document on the project governance guiding, guide lays out all of those things, and then you will see them when they're, when you look at the document.
Trustee McDonald, I think when you wrote or read that, there was a gap, if it's over a hundred thousand, it comes to the board, if it's between fifty and a hundred.
Yeah, not seventy-five.
Oh.
You said seventy-five.
Okay, yep, I'm sorry, between fifty and a hundred, yep, there was a gap there. Thank you for correcting me.
I thought it was twenty-three, or am I mistaken?
This is, this is different.
Yes.
You're, you're thinking of when they normally will, will come to us with an item, this is specific to the construction.
Specifically for this construction project.
Just based on the size of the dollars we're dealing with, twenty-three thousand's gonna be too restrictive.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and you'll see all the details when you get this document.
And it was more about a timing issue, because they didn't wanna hold up a project.
A huge project for.
For a change order.
Right. So then again, you will see this when it comes to you in board briefs next week, we also discussed a couple other things. We talked about the building use guidance, and it's not a policy, it's a guidance. Uh, the permits. I've got notes, notes all over, I apologize. Uh, the permit is applied for, it goes through the permit office, but the actual approval goes through the building itself. We talked about three different tiers, and this is the way it's currently set up, that there are three different tiers of the prices that are paid for using buildings. One of them is things that are through the district, which would be example of the neighbor, or through, I'm sorry, PTAs, neighborhood associations, those kind of things. The second would be city groups, city relations, or city recreation department, and the third is groups that are from outside the district. See, there's different charges for also, depending on what is used, whether it be a field or a classroom or a cafeteria or whatever, so that's the way it's broken down. There were some, still some questions about exactly where we're gonna go on this, so that's, the, the discussion, I think, is gonna continue. Group one just pays for the labor cost, and I think I may have missed something, my colleagues in that committee, did you have anything to add?
The main thing is that the district, we're gonna have the district expand the committee that works on this to include Mr. Andrews, uh, I think it was Mr. Misher and a few other people that would be being impacted by any change.
And they would have more, more privy to the information needed to help with this, so further discussion is.
Yeah, and still trying to, to find a way to be equitable between all the groups and, and what they pay and have access to it.
And the one thing that was definitely stated is, once this guideline is set in place, that is the way it is. There's not gonna be any more finagling, well, I know John, let me have a better bright rate, I could fall into this group, although I'm, most of us are in it. It's gonna be set, it's gonna have to be set in stone, and that's the way it is, to be fair and equitable to all.
Any other committee reports? All right. Next?
Next item is board member superintendent commentary.
Trustee Watts?
Since it's already December, and I don't know where the school year has gone, but for those who celebrate a Merry Christmas to everyone, and a safe holiday, if you go on vacation and whatnot, but I think in light of what has happened to Oxford community, just to have some time to reflect with your family, and I think we could all have that extra time, because there are four families that'll never have that Christmas ever again, so, just thoughts, thoughts for those families.
Another one that I will mention, going out to the students and their families, the staff and the residents, I wanna thank you for engaging with us over 2021. It has been a interesting and challenging, would be some, some pleasant words you could probably use for what this year has been. We are not done with all this, so the conversations will continue, as has been mentioned by Dr. Maliko before. When you next see us, we will be sitting in different seats, because that is part of the way that this board has worked for years, where we will rotate and allow everyone to have a chance. Doesn't really matter who is in any one seat, because no one of us can get anything done, it takes seven voices to, to get things moving. So it has been an honor to serve as the president this year. Next item.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Moszep had asked the one item for Dr. Patterson with assessment.
Trustee Barry?
Trustee Barry?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Maliko has mentioned at least twice in tonight's meeting about supporting middle school music by a, a board member and an administrator. What I'd like to see, and this is something that can wait till February, March, maybe the administrators of the buildings, of the middle schools, give us a live report at a board meeting, and hopefully, it's a different theater, middle school, teach high school, for example, maybe Bryant, Smith, and Lowry, just so they can share with us, what does that mean to them, that we support middle school music, and what are their plans? So maybe we can come up with some ideas how we can, you know, as a board, how we can support, support the middle school music. Again, no hurry, sometimes in the near future, thank you.
Trustee Watts?
Mr. Martin had, he came to the podium to explain one of the agenda items, but I'd like to, and there was a lot of information there, but to get an overview between the difference between E twenty twenty, I think there was ASAP, there was, just so that we can just get something on some documentation, just so that we can see the various umbrellas, the various components under the umbrella for credit recovery and what all of those different programs and how they are utilized.
Are you thinking of that for a board presentation, or just more information for the board?
I think a presentation would be helpful for parents. I think there's just a lot there, and I think that I, many people probably have the same questions, because I was overwhelmed by how much there was.
And I believe the high schools are having an orientation that's just gonna explain the different programs soon, the next week or two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
The high school options.
You're right.
Uh two other items that I would bring up that were mentioned during the citizen participation was the Student Code of Conduct. Uh if we need to to do any type of review when we last reviewed that, uh to make sure that that we've got um proper policies in place um based on current situations with with threats. Uh and also if we need to to review curriculum, um just in terms of uh from a social emotional level, are there certain projects that students are working on in school uh that might not make them feel safe? Anything else? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Mondays, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, HFC Board of Trustees, seven PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center and Report College in the Rosenau Wardroom. Monday, January tenth, twenty-twenty-two, P twelve Policy Committee Meeting, five-thirty at the Administrative Service Center in Room Twelve. Monday, January tenth, twenty-twenty-two, P twelve Organizational Meeting, six forty-five PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frank Chee Boardroom. Monday, January tenth, twenty-twenty-two, P twelve Board of Education Meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frank Chee Boardroom.
We wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year, we look forward to seeing you in twenty-twenty-two.